Good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden, and I’m the Chair of this committee. And I’m joined today by Councilmembers Conno, Bender, Yang, Quincy, Worsami, Frye, Pomisano, Reich. And we are also joined today by Mayor Hodges, so welcome. We are a form of this committee, and we have three items on our agenda for today, all our discussion items. The first item is consideration of appointments to our newly-created Transgender Equity Council. And so I’ll ask Ms. Rivera Vandermeide to approach and give us some overview of this item. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. My name is Naria Rivera Vandermeide. Thank you for having me here. It is a joy to stand before you today and an honor to represent and put forward for appointments several members of our newly-created Trans Equity Council. As many of you know, it has been a long time coming. The Trans Issues Work Group was formed in 2014, and since then really advanced the interest and the voices of our transgender and gender nonconforming community in the city. We are now in the midst of our third annual summit and planning our fourth annual this year, and that comes as a direct result of those actions approved by the City Council previously. Excuse me. In 2015, the council approved the formation of a transgender advisory board, and subsequently in February earlier this year, we actually approved what is now known as the Trans Equity Council, or Transgender Equity Council. And so today, we bring forward appointments, and I’ll say that when we made a call for an open seats, there are several members of the council. The composition is, and I’m looking here of our staggered terms, I don’t have it with me, but we have eight members that are community members, two of which are mayoral appointments, six of which are council member appointments, and then some of our jurisdictional partners. But I will say that we had over 71 applicants representing all 13 wards. It was extraordinary response, and I really just applaud the folks that applied and that rose to the occasion to be representative, to advance the issues of the transgender community. And with great pleasure, we advanced those names, or some of those names, today as we move this forward and formally constitute the Trans Equity Council. Today, for approval, are council appointments to the city’s Transgender Equity Council that begin immediately and end December 31 of 2018. And I apologize if somehow I mispronounce people’s names, it’s somebody whose names, that happens too frequently. Forgive me if somehow I misrepresented your name. But Nova Bradford from Ward 7, Seat 1; Malene Duda, Ward 12, Seat 2; E.J. Dean, Ward 12, Seat 3; Zim Porter, Ward 5, Seat 4; Nick Puchner, Ward 8, Seat 5; Freya Richmond, Ward 10, Seat 6; and two mayoral appointments to the city’s Transgender Equity Council that also begin immediately and end December 31, 2018; Natalie Crowley, Ward 7, Seat 7; Taylor Rose Payer, Ward 9, Seat 8. We also put forward one of our jurisdictional partners, and we’re just formally waiting on approval for our other two, and so hopefully we’ll come forward with that soon, but Elise Niedermeyer, who has been part of our Transgender Issues Work Group for the past year or two, and is a resident of St. Paul, and so we request she has been the person that the Park Board has forwarded for their representative. And as a resident of St. Paul, we request a waiver of residency as per our ordinance rules. So with that, I put that forward for your approval and stand for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. I know the mayor was here and wanting to make some comments, and so seeing no one else in queue, I want to go ahead and turn it over to her to make some comments, and then we’ll move forward.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for letting me speak. I want to say a huge thank you to everybody who is willing to serve on this council. I want to thank also the over 70 people who applied to be on this council. I think it is a testament to us as a city and a testament to this work that people had enough faith in it to want to participate, knowing that the work group as it was constituted, and to you, Madam Chair, and I know Andrea Jenkins is here, who helps lead the way on putting that working group together, and then to the council for this council, the Equity Council now. I think people saw that we, as a city, are dedicated to this work and have been willing to take recommendations from the work group and make them real. You know, I know that I’ve put investments in the budget, I know that there have been policy changes that have been made as a result of the work that the group has done. And so that gave, I think, a lot of people, a lot of faith moving forward, that good things are happening here for transgender people, for gender diverse people, for gender nonconforming people, that we in Minneapolis, we love our community, we love our trans community, we love the people here, and that is made manifest with how we do the work together, and it’s made manifest in how we make, you know, we use the levers we have at our disposal to work together with the community to make positive change. And so at a time when the national level is incredibly toxic, incredibly punishing, abandoning GLBTQ people in so many ways, we, as a city, are saying, hey, we are here, we continue this work, we move ahead together. And we have amazing partners on this council who are willing to do the work, and there is so much more to be done that all the rest of the folks, great applicants that we unfortunately couldn’t select, we will be able to partner and work together moving forward. So thank you, everybody. This is just a great day for the city. This is official and wonderful, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to make a few remarks, just to really say thank you to those who made this possible, and really that’s the community members. I think sometimes the city does things, and you know, this is where you kind of get the top-down language, and we kind of do something, and we hope that it works, that community embraces it. And I think this is a good example of where we really took a different approach, where it was community members who suggested how to start the work. It was community members who said you need to start slow and make sure we get a good grounding in the city. It was community members who said do an annual event so that we can reach out to more people and kind of build a better trusting relationship with the city. And we listened, and we tried to do our best as city government to listen, and here we are today with over 70 applicants for the very first ever Transgender Equity Council for the city of Minneapolis. And I want to thank and acknowledge the Transgender Issues Work Group, which was the precursor to this group that we are about to appoint today. And thank Andrea Jenkins, who was without any question the instigator of this work. I want to thank Philippe Cunningham, who was our most recent chair of the Transgender Issues Work Group. I see Roxanne Anderson, I believe somewhere, who is here in person. I just want to acknowledge these folks who were able to make their time. And many city staff people, who I just want to say were very devoted to making sure that they could understand how they could be part of the work and better support community. Once again, I feel like we are relying on cities to get the job done when other levels of government won’t do it. We are wanting to make this work sustainable. We are wanting to make sure that we are a trusted place for a community, and I think, and I hope that this is what will happen with this inaugural group. I just want to say the work isn’t going to be easy, because you’re the first ones, and don’t be afraid to make this what you think it should be. That’s my advice to the new appointees. And I just want to say again, I appreciate you stepping up for this first job. And a big signal that we want to send, we support all of our community members, we support transgender and non-gender conforming community members, and I hope that we are trusted for being part of the work with you. So with that, I’m not seeing any other comment requests, so all in approval of this item, please say aye. Aye, opposed, that item is approved. And to folks who were here for this particular item, I want to say feel free to get up and leave, because we have two other major items, some with community members as well, and we have a reception if you’d like to finish out your time socially together, or you’re welcome to stick. Next, we have our American Indian Memorandum of Understanding refresh for 2017. And we’ll wait just a second to allow folks to exit. Mr. Rubedar, were you going to kick us off?
Chair Glidden and committee members, good morning. I am David Rubedar, Director of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department with the city of Minneapolis. And this morning, I’m going to be presenting an update of the American Indian Memorandum of Understanding. I’m going to be co-presenting this with Joe Hobot, Dr. Joe Hobot, who is the President and CEO of the American Indian OIC, and is also the Chair of the Metropolitan Indian Directors Group. So Joe will join me up at the podium, that would be great. So we are also joined by a number of community members and community leaders that are in the audience as well. This is a very historic document for the city of Minneapolis, and there has been a significant community process that’s been underway over the last year, per Council Vice President Glidden’s comments earlier, that this was driven by the community and how the community would like to have the relationship with the city. So the revision that we’re going to be discussing today really was led through a community process for your consideration. So first, directly, what we’re requesting today is approval of the MOU, the draft, or the Revised Memorandum of Understanding, as well as appointments to the formal work group that will be taking the work and moving it forward. The original MOU was signed really with the basis of building a better and stronger relationship between the American Indian community and the city, and has been the basis for just an ongoing relationship with the community and the city. It was originally signed in 2003, led by the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group and also the city of Minneapolis. And for a little while after it was adopted, it started to languish a bit. In 2011, when the NCR Department was established, Neighborhood and Community Relations, we really had the opportunity to accelerate this work and bring this memorandum back to life. And with the council’s approval in 2011, we reestablished the work group, and the work began to get underway. We knew at that time that we needed to do a significant revision of the MOU, it was already dated, but we also wanted to get the work underway, and so we started and continued to move forward with it. In that, we’ve seen significant changes in leadership both within the community organizations that were original with the MOU, as well as within the city. We’re also seeing a pretty significant change that has been occurring in the American Indian community, and I think Dr. Hobot will speak to that a little bit more, but we’re seeing a much greater collaboration between organizations within the American Indian community, as well as new leadership around the Metropolitan Urban Indians Directors Group. And so this really provided an opportune time to really revisit this work and to bring the memorandum up to a current situation. So in June of last year, the Committee of the Whole set this work forward with approval of a process really to do an engagement with the American Indian community to revise the MOU, and that is what is before us today. I did want to point out, on the original MOU, that the entire council, all 13 council members, had signed it. It was a rather historic event, and that the community has held this Memorandum of Understanding in high regard. As you can see on the list here, some of the current council members were original signers. I will also point out that Council, a former council member, Robert Lillgren, who is in the audience, was also a big champion of this work and continues to be, and was actually a significant part of the revision that you see before you today. I also wanted to highlight just a little bit on the community itself. The American Indian community makes up about 2% of the city’s population, which accounts for about 7,700 people in our city. It is mostly located in wards 9, 6, and 12, albeit American Indians live throughout our entire city. We also have the greatest number of American Indians really located in the East Phillips neighborhood. We also, for a city, have the only American Indian preference housing in the United States with Little Earth, which is also located in the East Phillips neighborhood. It has more than, that represents more than people from 30 different tribal nations. And so we have, it’s a small community in the city, but it’s a very important community in the city, and it’s been a very organized and a very impactful community within the city. For today, Dr. Hobot is going to go over a little bit more of the details of what’s in the MOU, but I did want to leave you with, before I hand it over to him, the specific action around adopting, in addition to adopting the MOU, is to appoint the people that will be representing the city on the work group. The way the MOU is actually structured is that there would be a minimum of five people from the city of Minneapolis, as well as five people from the community. The Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group will actually do the appointments, is doing the appointments, I should say, on the community side. On the city side, that is up to the mayor and the city council. We had, as I stated, five minimum on there. What’s before you today is six, actually, from the community, and also six from the city of Minneapolis. I will say the work around the revision and updating the MOU has generated a lot more interest in this and kind of an eagerness to be part of the new group. So before you today is, the appointments that we’re looking at would be Councilmember Alondra Conno, who represents the ninth ward, myself as the Director of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, Craig Taylor, the Director of CPED, Community Planning and Economic Development, Gretchen Musickamp, the Commissioner of Health, Jean Renerie, Director of Intergovernmental Relations, and Janay Harto, the Chief of Police for the city of Minneapolis. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Hobot.
All right. Welcome, Dr. Hobot.
Greetings, Madam Vice President, members of the city council. I will speak briefly about the vision of the MOU and the work that we put into it that led us up to this point. The majority of the work that was endeavored was to refresh the language, to suggest that the nature of our community is integral to the living, thriving nature of the city of Minneapolis, that our history is the city’s history. And beyond that, we wanted to invoke the concept of Tiospe, a Lakota term, that we are an extended family or community, that we work together in a collaborative way for the best results for all of our people. To that end, our community does retain some significant challenges as it continues to move forward, but we also possess significant strengths. First among those is our ability to recognize our own culture, to leverage that culture in a manner that is meaningful to our people, and to move forward in a collaborative, family style way in which our interests are supported in a way that does not define us in terms of the challenges we encounter, but defines us in how we tackle those challenges. So going forward, what will be a part of the MOU is a State of the American Indian Address and Report that we’d like to present to this body on an annual basis. We’re prepared to do that after the acceptance of the MOU by this body. So we’d be like to come back and visit with you later this spring, present that report to enlighten you about the work that we pursue, not only as a collective body, but through the various subcommittees that comprise the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group. I would like to take also a moment, again, to second the recognition of Robert Lillgren and the inception point of this work a few years back. I’d also like to commend the working with David Rubedar, and of course, I cannot understate the importance and value of Christine McDonald, and her position here at the city has been absolutely integral in guiding this work and being a liaison between the city offices and our community. So wopla tanka to Christine as well. So going forward, we are encouraged by the receptivity of this body with our community. We are excited to have such willing collaborators to work with us on moving our community forward in a leadership role. So with that, I’ll leave it to any questions that the body may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. And I just, I apologize. And I might just ask if you would like to introduce the community members who are here in support of the agreement?
Absolutely. We stacked the house, so.
I just wasn’t sure, all the different programs, so.
Joining me here is the Executive Director of Beegewind Community Loan and Development Fund, Monica Yellweller, and of course, Robert Lillgren from NACDE. We have Mary Lagard from the Minneapolis American Indian Center, Patina Park, the Executive Director of the Minnesota Indians Resource Center, who is also the Vice Chair of MUD. Koya Whitehead Artetopia is with us, and Don Clark, a fellow community member, all here in support of the work that we do. The rest are busy working, so.
Right. Well, thank you. I just didn’t want to miss an opportunity to kind of thank the folks who were able to come, and the others who’ve been part of what appears to be a really deep period of work to produce this refresh of the Memorandum of Understanding. The action that is before us today, I apologize here, is to, yep, and I will, just one second here, is to approve the appointments and then receive and file the presentation. So I’ll go ahead, and Councilmember Conno, I know I’d requested to speak, maybe she wants to make that motion.
Thank you, Council Vice President Glidden. I’m fine with whoever wants to make the motion. I just wanted to take a few minutes of our time here today to acknowledge and recognize the valuable time and energy that all of our community leaders have put forward. We’ve been talking about this refresh for quite some time now, and it’s really beautiful to see it come to fruition. And I just want to say that I work with a lot of different groups of people who are advancing projects and working on them, and I want to say to you that by far, this is one of the most highly organized, sophisticated organizations that I know has been putting a lot of dedication to advance and elevate the voice and impact of indigenous communities in our nation and in Minneapolis. And I know that you are that national model that so many folks talk about. And so the proclamation of Indigenous Peoples’ Day back in 2014, and the work that you all have continued to do to elevate that and ground it in community voice, has been extremely powerful, again, not only for Minneapolis and our state and our region, but also nationally. So I just want to commend you as community leaders who I know have to lift a lot of heavy burdens to get our communities to move forward, that our municipal work would not be half as impactful without you as active partners who are also actively moving these conversations and convening people and raising money and leveraging all the work that we can do together. So I just want to say that it’s an honor to be able to work with you on these efforts, and I’m really excited to continue to support. So thank you. And I want to acknowledge Christine McDonald, too, who’s always at every meeting that I’m at with the community, and that’s beautiful, that’s exactly the type of Neighborhood and Community Relations staff member that we need. You’re extremely visible, accessible, and connected, and I think that’s a great service to our residents and our city. So thank you, Christine.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Conno, for those comments. I know you’ve been very involved in the work, and also for the acknowledgement of all who have helped produce this. So we have a motion on the table then to approve the appointments to serve on the American Indian MOU work group, and then to receive and file the refreshed American Indian Memorandum of Understanding. And just one last thing I want to say is, I actually, I really appreciate, too, the recommendation that we have a more regular contact with this group by having an annual reporting. I think that will be very helpful to make sure the city is staying in touch and in tune and understanding kind of how the work is progressing. So I think that was a very important recommendation, actually. So thank you. With that, I’m not seeing any further discussion. All approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, that item is approved. Thank you all very, very much.[1403.53][1403.53](APPLAUSE). This might be the first time I remember that we have applause after two items in the Committee of the Whole, but they both are very, very significant items. And I will say we’re about to turn to another very significant item, so. All right. So our third item is to discuss the city’s Medicaid Plan transition in 2018 to self-insurance. And I’m looking for who is kicking off our present. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Glidden and members of the committee. My name is Ricka Stenderson, and I’m part of the Human Resources Department here at the city. Today, we’re going to be sharing with you the history of self-insurance discussions at the city, the advantages of self-insurance, our current renewal with our current medical carrier, Medicaid, and finally, our staff recommendations and timeline for implementation. But first, I wanted to just take a minute to talk about why this issue is important for the city. At $60 million annually, the Employee Medical Plan is not only the most costly benefit that we offer, but also the employee benefit that ranks number one in importance to employees. And that applies universally, not just to city employees, but survey after survey show that employee healthcare benefits rank as number one in importance to job seekers, as well as employees. And in the current job market, the city is competing for top talent. Our benefit package is key in being able to attract and retain top talent in order to run our world-class city.
So we have an early question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In order to understand how much, to dive into this for me, I need to know where our employees are on this.
Okay.
So I don’t want to hear a whole presentation, then here at the end, our employees don’t like it, or they’re not on board with it. I’d be thinking about it differently, depending on where, especially the people who rely most on this, women who work in the city in particular, where are our unions on this?
Yeah. And I might just say, in addition to kind of introducing who’s here in the audience, and so then you can talk about the Benefits Committee, Labor Management Benefits Committee, but you might also say who else is here to kind of support your presentation, so we kind of have that context, because they have brought a lot of resources here, so that if we do have questions outside of asking city staff, others are here, including representing labor and so forth.
Thank you, Chair Glidden and Councilmember. Yes, we do have our labor partners here in the audience, and I see several of them. This is a joint presentation by Human Resources and Finance. We also have colleagues from Hennepin County who have self-insured their medical plan in the past. They’re available to answer questions. I was planning to bring up the labor representative from our Benefits Labor Management Committee, Jim Michaels, to make some comments, and if you would prefer, we could do that before we kick off the presentation.
We can do that, just to kind of hear, maybe more briefly, kind of where did the committee land on this and labor land on this. Mr. Michaels, welcome.
Madam Chair, committee members, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and thank you, Councilmember Goodman, for inquiring as to where the employees are at. Most of you have heard me say this before, but I think it really merits saying again. I represent employees and their unions throughout the state of Minnesota, and the work that is done by your Benefits Labor Management Committee in terms of collaborating between labor and management to solve very complicated and very expensive problems is second to none. In fact, it is a model that I have tried to encourage other cities and counties to adopt, and that’s in credit to both the labor representatives, but also to our partners in the Human Resources and Finance Departments. So again, I just want to reemphasize that that is something that we can all be proud of. I kind of, this being the third presentation that I hope we get some applause, too, because it feels like Collaboration Day in the city of Minneapolis, which is wonderful.
It’s a big item. We could applaud.
But yes, but this, the work towards self-insurance is something that all three legs of our partnership, and including the consultants that we have hired to help the committee, so I mean labor, finance, and human resources, have been working on for five years, literally, to position ourselves, both in terms of the design for the plan, but also the homework that we’ve done in analyzing, you know, the benefits and, quite honestly, the risks of moving forward. And this is wholeheartedly supported by labor. We do believe it will be a benefit, a huge benefit, not only for our employees, but also for the taxpayers in terms of the savings that we’re able to provide, and also the transparency. And I don’t want to steal more from Ricka’s presentation, but I just wanted to reassure everyone that labor does support this. We have been at the table from day one, and we will continue to work together to try and make this a reality, and we’re very excited that we’ve made it this far, and we’re looking forward to the opportunities. So I’ll be happy to answer any questions now or as the presentation goes forward.
I’m going to ask that we hold on that so that we can hear just the full presentation. I think this is a good just level setting, so people know where different important stakeholders are at. But I appreciate we could hear the presentation, and then we are able to ask questions from stakeholders, as well as from city staff.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to mention Tony Kelly is here from labor, and he would like to add a few comments, if that’s okay.
Okay.[1787.01][1787.01](LAUGHTER). We see you, Sarah.
Madam Vice Chair and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I absolutely support.
I absolutely support everything that Jim just said, and I would just add that we're excited to engage in this new direction, to take some control over the decisions that we make on healthcare, and to design plans that work for our employees based off of feedback that we hear directly from them, and to engage with our management partners to come up with something that actually realizes cost savings. I think it's a very exciting opportunity.
Thank you for that. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
It's, I will just say, this is a really big, I think, decision for the city, and so I think having a little additional questions, I can understand that. So I just want to be flexible, then. Thank you very much.
So the city's fully insured medical plan over the last decade experienced significant cost increases. Many of those years, we had double-digit increases as high as 16 and 1/2%. To control the costs, the city and our labor partners, working along with the Benefits Labor Management Committee, took a number of actions, including plan design adjustments. For example, in 2014, we doubled the deductible, and that was